Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the regular meeting of council for Monday, February 6th. We'll officially call the meeting to order. Hope everybody had a great Hawaiian weekend and the lovely weather here. We're going to go and start with new and council business. We have one item on the agenda, 2-1 here from councillor Parslow. Councillor.
Okay, I think it's just been distributed to council members. I'd just like to read it for the media.
Please.
I am giving notice of a motion I intend to present at the March 5th meeting of council. The motion will be that Policy 325 be amended. To rejoin the first year of each council's term, the complete policy manual is to be reaffirmed by council. This will entail some work and time, therefore I'll also make a motion that the strategic planing be amended to hold over to next year the public engagement training and replace it with review of city policy.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that heads up. So that will be then on the March 5th. Anything else you wish to add at this time? I'm sorry, Brenda, we don't need a motion.
No, I think we've got a big agenda and I've got lots of material if needed, but I think that can wait until March the 5th.
Excellent. So, thanks for that. That's always nice when council can bring it forward and kind of give a heads up for everybody. Appreciate that. Anything else from council and new council business? Councillor Wilber.
I'll just be quick. The cleanup date has been set for May 5th with the alternative being May 12th, and pitch-in week is April 23rd, and it's the 45th anniversary, so I'll update as more information moves forward.
May 5th.
May 5th.
This is the important one.
May 5th is the important one.
Excellent. Thanks for that. Anything else, councillor Malkinson?
Your worship, I'd like to make council aware of a performance tomorrow at the art gallery. I'm not sure what sort of events going on there. I think they're having a concert with a local group that's from my previous high school. Also, I'd like to make council aware of an interact fundraiser going on at the George Dawson on the 14th of this month, I think, Friday.
Good. Thank you. I think so, yeah. So, seeing nothing else from council on new business, then we'll move on to minutes. We have 3-1, which are the regular minutes of council from January 23rd for adoption. You have councillor Kenny, councillor Schuman seconding. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And did anyone have business arising from those minutes? No? Seeing none, then we'll move into correspondence. First item on correspondence is 5-1, which is a memo from the North Central Local Government Association. This is just regarding our AGM and conventions for 2013. Councillor Schuman.
For information. Is this the Chetwens withdrawal?
Yes. So, thank you. So, seconded by councillor Kenny. And I'll just let you know that what happened was, last meeting of the NCLGA, we had a discussion that next year it was supposed to be hosted by Chetwin. After discussions with Chetwin, they informed us because of the activity up here, they were unable to secure 300 hotel rooms, which are needed in order to host an event like this. So because of that, they've withdrawn, and we are now looking for another community to look to host it in 2013. So, I know we hosted it a few years ago. 2009, I think? Yeah, '09 or '10. Yeah, I think '09. So, right now it's for information, so. Any questions, then? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 5-2 is a letter again from the NCLGA, and this is just regarding our membership dues for the year. Councillor Schuman.
I would move that we pay our membership dues for the NCLGA.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor McFadden. Any questions? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. Excuse me. 5-3 is another letter from the NCLGA, and this is regarding the call for nominations for the next year of 2012, 2013 for the executive. And presently, we have councillor Schuman on there as the regional rep. So the option's just for a new council as well. If anybody's wishing to put their name forward for that, there would be any of the executive positions, director-at-large or the regional rep. And if councillor Schuman wishes to stay on as the regional rep, then we would have to make a motion to submit her name to the regional district for consideration to stay on again.
I'm interested.
Okay. So councillor Kenny, move to submit councillor Schuman's name to the regional district? Okay. Seconded by councillor McFadden. So on that one, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. And is there anybody else interested in putting their name forward or a position?
I'd like to, but I don't have time.
Yeah. And as past president, I will be off as of this AGM. I'm complete.
Can I just tell you to be a director-at-large again?
Yeah, it'd be nice to get some change. Get some new people on there. I've been, I think I'm the longest-serving person now on that board, so. Okay, so seeing none? No more. Then we'll move on to 5-4. 5-4 is a letter from the Canadian Office of Professional Employees Union, and this is regarding smart meters. Councillor Schuman.
For information.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Wilber. Any discussion? No? All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. 5-5 is a letter from Canadian Union of Public Employees, and this is regarding a proposed Canadian European Union trade agreement. Councillor Kenny.
Move for information.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Schuman. Yeah. And any other, any discussion from anyone? At the UBCM or NCLGA conference, too, there's usually, sometimes at the FCM, a lot of update on this trade agreement, too, for people who are unfamiliar with it. So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And it's not quite nearly nine o'clock yet, so we'll move over delegations into reports. And the first report we have is 7-1, and this is Report 12-011 from the Chief Administrative Officer. This is regarding the Dawson Creek Fire Department's master fire plan. Councillor Kenny.
I move the recommendation that the report number ADM12011 from Chief Administrator Officer, regarding the Dawson Creek Fire Department Master Plan 2012 be received, and further that the council direct staff to take action to implement the five key recommendations from the executive summary over the next three years, including preparation of budget allocation requests where necessary in the annual budgets of 2012, 2013, and 2014.
Seconded by councillor McFadden. Any discussion? Councillor Parslow.
Just perhaps CEO would outline the five key recommendations that are referenced in the recommendation in the motion.
Jim? Yes, through your worship, just let me get them up here. It's loading slowly. These are contained in the report, starting on page 3. So, you saw the background summary in the, in the report. These are actually a trickle-down from the Fire Hunter Writers Survey. So the first recommendation is that a training site be developed. You've had budget allocation requests on that in previous years. The second is regarding how the training site will be used and the training priorities that will be placed on individuals who are in the line of succession to take over captain's duties and shift command. That's another thing that the chief has brought to you in the past. The third recommendation is that you add two firefighter positions for coverage of short-term absences. That will be a significant cost. The fourth issue is around the dispatch services that are being provided there. Again, the chief has spoken to you about this. It's a combination of the physical environment that the dispatch work in, along with the lack of firmed-up agreements with the regional district about the outcomes to be expected from the dispatch. And finally, it's a backup plan for dispatch in case it was for some reason disrupted. And the final recommendation is the chief's fire truck. So I'm sorry to tell you, I'm going to be recommending to you in your budget package that we actually buy the new pumper truck.
We were so.
Fourth, you're lucky? Is that what that one is?
Sure, he's got to get lucky somewhere.
So, supplement.
Councillor Parslow, yes.
Thank you. So, as I read this recommendation in the subsequent motion, just so that I understand it completely, what is it? What are the implications of this statement? The council directs staff to take action to implement. Does that mean that these things will be contained in budget for further ratification or denial?
Yeah.
Rather than meaning that they're going to happen?
Yeah. Through your worship, a budget proposal we brought to you this year regarding the fire truck. Two of the items there, the training items, can be proceeded with without financial resourcing, and so they will go ahead. And in a subsequent year, you will get a recommendation for additional firefighters. But you will have to approve it at budget time before it is put into place.
One final question, if I may, concerning the Dawson Creek Fire Department Master Plan. There's one or two items in this plan that I think need, I'd like to discuss, and I think they need to be discussed in camera. So can that be added to substantive in-camera agenda? I may be wrong that they're in camera, but my hunch is that they should be.
Okay. With that motion, you'd have to make a motion for that.
Oh, well, we've got a motion on the floor anyway, so. Deal with that one first.
Sure.
Through your worship, if there are concerns from councillor Parslow, shared by the rest of you, you need to defer decision because the motion is asking you to adopt this plan. So if there are elements of the plan that you don't wish to adopt, you can't proceed with the motion to adopt them.
That is not the issue for me. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's good. I mean, yeah, because the motion as stands is, as is worded then. Okay. Any other discussion on this motion? No? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried.
I'd like to move that the council discuss the Dawson Creek Fire Department Master Fire Plan, elements of it in-camera.
Okay, and we should be able to make that motion to move it into today's in-camera and just add it to the list.
We would assume that that's relative to personnel?
Yes.
Would be the reason.
Okay. Thank you. So seconded by councillor Kenny. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? It's carried. So we'll move on then to 7-2. 7-2 is Report 12-012 from the Chief Administrative Officer, and this is regarding Walter Wright Pioneer Village Mile Zero Park. And as you'll see, there's quite, quite a lot of information here for council. Decisions, councillor Parslow.
I'd like to move the recommendation. I'll read the recommendation.
Please.
That report number ADM12-012 from the Chief Administrative Officer, re-Walter Wright Pioneer Village Mile Zero Park be received. Further, the council direct, that they intend to proceed to reconfigure Mile Zero Park, Walter Wright Pioneer Village, to a public park, RV park mix with Rotary Lake decommissioned or converted to a surface splash park. Further, the council direct staff to meet with the Mile Zero Park Society, Dawson Creek Historical Society, and Tourism Dawson Creek to explain the new direction, canvass for interest in future participation in the park, and begin negotiation of the detailed transition to the new direction.
Okay, thank you. And that would be seconded by councillor Malkinson. And council discussion. Councillor McFadden.
It just occurred to me, is this going to require a different and new contract then between the city and whomever? I guess it would eventually, won't it?
It will, but Jim?
Yeah. Through your worship, certainly it would change the operational environment there, and there would need to be a new contract. The hope would be that you could negotiate new arrangements in the near term. Failing that, the existing contracts expire in 2013, so the new system could replace the old for 2014 and beyond.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else from council? My question then, Jim, would be around modifying our strategic plan again for something like this, because as we know, this was brought forward during our strategic priority session and did not receive, I guess enough votes to proceed this year. So with this motion, we're adding something to the box, and I'm just curious on where something's coming off.
Through your worship, I would see this as being, I don't believe that there would be a necessity for council to be particularly involved in the negotiations. When there's a product of that, it'll come to council, but I would expect we will have several meetings with the various societies before we're ready for a meeting with council. I don't know that this will be a particularly large piece of work in this year.
Yeah. And budget implications for this year are minimal, obviously, until decisions are being made, which would be planned in subsequent years. My only, my only concern personally is on the community engagement portion of this. I agree and I understand with the direction we're going, but especially around the use of not only the Pioneer Village, but my major concern would be Rotary Lake. As we know, when we have years like last year, it wasn't used hardly at all because of the weather. We understand the health implications or safety implications of having that and why the recommendation has been for many years, that we need to look at phasing that out. So I agree with that direction. I just think we need to make sure that the community understands why. It's going to be, especially the positive side of things if we need to decommission that, but with the option of the splash park. So last one, Jim, I know that there was a community group, I believe volunteers, that were working towards fundraising efforts towards a splash park, so I'm assuming we'll engage them as well, see how that went, and incorporate their concept maybe? Is that, I just, when I look at the wording, it says decommission or. And so I'm just looking forward to seeing how that progresses, I guess. So councillor Kenny?
Was the splash park, where was the splash park, it was supposed to be located in Rotary?
The original plan from that local group was to put it at the south end of the lake.
Yeah, yeah.
So they could utilize the water, the filtration system and everything that was set up already for Rotary Lake. It would be cheaper and it would help on the recycling aspect of the splash park. But if we decommission, then it just has to be looked at differently, but at least we'd have something in that area.
It'd be a shame to see that swimming area gone.
Yes, but as we've seen over the last couple of years, to keep it, it's a huge budget item if we want to keep it. A lot of work has to get, be put into it.
Be interesting, though, to see what, you know, what the cost would be of the splash park to the swimming pool.
Yeah. Councillor Parslow.
So the intention of this motion is just to provide direction?
Yes.
All the stuff will be unpacked as we move forward, but there's a pressing need to give some direction to the Mile Zero Park?
Definitely.
And through the consultation and planning and so on, all these matters will be discussed later.
Yeah. Yeah, it will be, it's not something happening overnight, that's for sure.
No.
Any other discussion, then? Okay. So all those in favor? Opposed? 7-3 is Report 12-022 from the Chief Administrative Officer regarding the exploring art group. And then there's the Report 12-021, and this is regarding the services as well for O'Brien School in a classroom space. And Jim?
Yes, through your worship, this should be deferred, I think, until after the delegation is.
Yeah. I was just, as I was reading, I was thinking that, too. We have 6-4 in here, so probably a motion to table till later on in the meeting. Councillor Schuman?
I'd make that motion.
Councillor Parslow? Till after the delegation. Okay. So all those in favor? Opposed? So 7-4 is Report 12-018, and this is from the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, and this is regarding the athletic commission appointments. Councillor Schuman?
I would move the recommendation that report number ADM12-018 from the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, read the athletic commission appointment, be received, and further that council appoint Clyde House for a three-year term on the council, or on the Dawson Creek Athletic Commission, and further that councillor Terry McFadden be appointed as the council liaison to this commission.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Wilber. Any discussion? Besides, thanks, Terry.
Pardon?
Thank you, councillor.
Oh, you're welcome, I think.
Did you know about it?
Yeah, you knew. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. We'll move on to 7-5, and this is Report 12-014 from the Director of Corporate Administration. This is around our 2012 budget timeline amendments that is needed again. Councillor Parslow.
I'd like to move that report number 12-014 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding 2012 budget timeline revision number two be received. Further, that the second budget public consultation scheduled for April the 24th at 7:00 PM be rescheduled to April the 23rd at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Kenny. And the only comment I have is, not that it's pertaining so much to the motion, but I wasn't elected to chair. I'm just a director.
I was going to say, like, wow, you didn't tell us that.
No. I'm a director on the, on the board. Presently, former mayor Evan Sockstad is still the Chair of the NDI, but tomorrow is our meeting as well, which will be electing a new chair.
So maybe you'll be the chair.
So yes, thank you for the motion then to change this because I will be in Victoria for four days, so. So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 7-6 is Report 12-016 from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration, and this is regarding our food primary liquor license application for Fix Urban Grill. Councillor Parslow.
I'd like to move the recommendation. Read the recommendation. That report number ADM12-016 from the Deputy Director of Corporate Administration, read food primary liquor license application for Schindler and Gamble Restaurant Corporation, DBA Fix Urban Grill, at 512 Highway 2 be received. Further, one, that council recommend the issuance of the food primary license for Schindler and Gamble Restaurant Corporation, as no comments were received from the community regarding the proposed liquor license. Further, that council provide the following comments on the prescribed considerations. 2A, the potential for noise will not negatively impact the area as the licensed establishment will be located on one of two arterial highways intersecting the city and proximate to a range of nearby social recreational and public buildings, which are considered compatible with a late-night commercial venue and where noise and traffic are the norm and to be expected. B, the licensed establishment is not anticipated to have a major effect on the community outside of offering an additional choice to residents wishing to enjoy a social outing, including food and beverage. And C, the issuance of the food primary license, including the extension of hours of service past midnight and patron participation, is not anticipated to result in the establishment being operated in a manner that is contrary to the primary purpose, particularly in the summer months. The city of Dawson Creek has daylight well into the evening, and late-night social outings are not unusual. In addition, the applicant, Mr. Schindler, is known to have been in the restaurant industry in the community for some years, and is expected to be familiar and compliant with liquor licensing regulations. Finally, the location was previously home to a similarly licensed restaurant and associated banquet facilities. So the proposed restaurant will not trigger a change to the area or community in regards to liquor. And finally, council provides the following comment regarding the views of the residents. The views of the residents were sought via posting of a notice on the city of Dawson Creek website, in the local newspaper, and direct mail drop to neighboring properties within a 30-meter radius, requesting comments no later than February 3rd, 2012. No comments were received, either in support or against the proposed food primary liquor license. Council does not wish to place roadblocks before community entrepreneurs, and as the prescribed regulatory process has been followed with no objections raised, recommends issuance of the license.
Thank you. Wow. Seconded by councillor Malkinson. After this passes, I almost want to make a motion to staff that from now on, if we're going to read out the entire thing, it has to be four lines or less.
Please.
Any questions on that motion? Aside from congratulations and looking forward to having another restaurant, hopefully a successful one down there. Councillor Schuman?
Is this a, is that called, like, a franchise? Or is it their own?
No. This is their own.
Awesome.
Yeah. Okay. No other discussion, then? So all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. On that, let's take two minutes. I think councillor Parslow needs a glass of water after all that, so then we'll get into delegations.
I'm used to reaching, sorry.
So welcome back, everybody. We're going to vary the agenda back to where it should be. We're going back to delegations being nine o'clock, and the first delegation we have is 6-1, Ms. Patsy Nagel in attendance. And I have a proclamation here for Women's Institute Week that I'll read out and then invite you to come forward, Patsy. So whereas the British Columbia Women's Institute is an educational organization for homemakers who, by working together, expand their skills, broaden their interests, and work to improve conditions in the home, the community, and around the world through service, self-fulfillment, and sociability; and whereas they sponsor and promote programs in agriculture, citizenship, home economics, health and welfare, and cultural pursuits; and whereas they function at the local, regional, provincial, national, and international level with a range of activities broad enough to encompass the interests of women; now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the week of February 19th to 25th as Women's Institute Week in Dawson Creek. Thanks for coming forward. Thanks for coming in. Congratulations. Very. So Matthew, since you're a pro.
He's got new batteries, hasn't he?
Especially one that looks like that, right?
Usually he chases it. The batteries usually die just as he's.
It's not, it won't be us.
I hope not.
He needs a backup.
You are a wizard with a camera.
I am, yeah. Seconded, not, no.
Yeah, please, if you'd like to have a few minutes.
I'd like to thank you for welcoming us here today, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about Women's Institute. It has a very long history, having started in Ontario in 1897. Athlete Hoodless, who had lost a baby son from drinking impure milk, decided that many mothers did not know how to be sure their food was pure, and that many children were dying from impure food and drink. So she was instrumental in organizing this first Women's Institute for the purpose of educating rural women in hygiene and food preparation. The organization spread rapidly across Canada, with BC forming the first WIs in 1909, so we've already had our centenary. They have since gone around the world with the Associated Country Women of the World, which was organized in 1933 by another Canadian, Mrs. Alfred Watt. So Women's Institute is really, was born in Canada, and now is around the world. We have over nine million members in more than 70 countries. Our model is for home and country, and you may see Women's Institute members supporting local areas in need and lobbying for improvement in the environment, health, education, and they support agriculture, forage, farmers' markets, and many other areas of concern. This is why we sell. This is why we celebrate the birthday of our founder, Adelaide Hoodless, on February nineteenth every year. We're proud of this worthwhile organization and urge women to join a branch in our area.
We'll move on to six two. Just seeing if you're here, Bee. And we have Bea Rutledge in attendance with some delegations from Toastmasters for a proclamation. I'll just read out the proclamation. Are you gonna ring the bell if I say um while I'm reading out the proclamation? No pressure here, by the way. So whereas Toastmasters International, a nonprofit educational organization, is a leader in making effective oral communication a national and international reality for all persons. And whereas the ability to speak clearly and effectively is a powerful and important skill that can help individuals overcome barriers to effective performance in virtually every endeavor and line of work. And whereas the first Toastmaster Club was formed in nineteen twenty-four in California and today, after more than eighty-seven years of outstanding achievement, Toastmasters International has grown to over two hundred and seventy thousand members in thirteen thousand clubs in a hundred and sixteen countries. And whereas the Toastmaster Program helps people develop skills in speaking, listening, giving feedback, decision-making, effective meeting management, delegating and mentoring, vital skills that promote self-actualization, enhanced leadership potential, foster human understanding, and contribute to the betterment of mankind. And whereas by helping people develop essential communication and leadership skills, Toastmasters International, its member Toastmasters Clubs, perform a valuable service to its members and the community. And whereas our Lieutenant Governor, by and with the advice and consent of the Executive Council, has been pleased to enact order to council nine zero three on October eleventh, two thousand and two. So now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of February, two thousand and twelve, as Toastmasters Month in Dawson Creek.
It's pretty easy when you're reading it right off the page.
I'll give you a few words if you want.
I was gonna say a few words.
Well, Heather-
Apparently, I'm going to say a few words at our Toastmasters meeting. We all struggle for a chance to talk, but now today I get to. So we'd like to invite all of council to our Toastmaster meeting Thursday evening, seven PM to eight fifteen PM, right around there, at the Farmers Advocacy Office. And it is always very good for all of you to be able to attend. It does help improve your speaking skills. So we do that for your copyright.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much. Councillor Shuman.
So, um, it's a ding ding ding. Oh, I just fell for that. So. So is not allowed either? Gosh.
Be okay though, Mike.
This is not how you encourage your council.
Thursday evenings now, like no more lunchtime or early mornings? Oh, that's awesome. Oh, okay, okay.
We have three band members in our club. Pam is not here, but she'll-
Right, right. Okay.
Yes, we do have a couple of other members who weren't able to attend.
So Thursday at seven at your- Okay, and I'll work on the so's and the ums.
Councillor Parzl, any questions?
This is a ladies group?
No.
No.
So councillor Lafferty, would you join us?
Yes.
Oh, we encourage you, man.
As could you turn.
Any other questions?
So is not allowed either?
Well, thanks for coming in and I will circulate this.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Because it's my favorite.
You have to have somebody on the bell constantly?
Yeah, they would.
So move to six three is the next item on delegations. We have Victoria Manson in attendance. Good morning.
Good morning.
You're representing the Canadian Bible Society and I believe you want to speak to us for a few minutes?
I'd love to.
You can have a seat if you wish. If you're more comfortable.
No, actually, I'm fine standing. I've come to you folks a few times over the years and I'll give you a little bit of history. The fellow who contacted me, Nico Hume, was the one back about eight, ten years ago who promoted agriculture in B.C., got the tractor parades going, got people aware of where their food came from. I met him at a first convention in Vernon. Really nice fellow, came from South Africa. He studied awful lot in the province of B.C. And then I got to know him personally and for the last six or seven years, I've been bugging him about coming up to the Peace Country. He came up to do a workshop at the George Dawson about agriculture. He belongs to a group of non-denominational bikers, which sounds really awful, but they're cyclists. They're not bikers. They get on these ten speeds and ride. They wear these really loud orange spandex outfits and they go on highways. And they've gone around Vancouver Island and the Lower Mainland and over towards Edmonton and Banff. But they've never come up here and it's a really pretty part of the province. It's a huge part. We feed a lot of the world. We provide energy for a lot of the world. Why not come up and have a good time? So on the fifteenth of December, he sent me a thing on the computer and said, okay, we're coming. And I went, great, so what do we need to do? And they, you've got the letter. They have to have places to stay, food to eat, a place to get cleaned up. They like to see the country. And they get pledges from different sponsors to raise money for the Canadian Bible Society, which, they started doing this in eighty-four in Australia. And they raised funds towards the Bibles. They did some last year, putting Bibles in prisons. And they also raised money to send to the troops overseas that were helping Canada. So he sent me the letter and said, well, I wonder if you could get ahold of the churches and community groups? And I went, ah, I know a bunch of people. I'll just hit them up and, yeah, hit them up for whatever they can do. So we've got, I'm talking with the Lutheran and the Presbyterian. The Anglican thought they might be able to help with letting them sleep in the church. The United has, is still considering feeding them when they get here Wednesday night, which is perfect because that's the start of the chuck wagon races. And they're gonna have their food booth down at the fairgrounds. And I went, oh my heavens, this is great. They can either eat first and then get cleaned up or they can get cleaned up and then come back over to the fairgrounds. This, the fair is a huge part of this community. So I went, okay, oh, I'll just go talk to city council. There's between thirty and fifty people that belong to this group, depending on how many are involved. They take their holiday time. They train all year, working on their bikes and swimming and doing whatever. And then they take their holiday time and go to a part of the province. They will get trucked up to Chatwind and they're gonna do the loop. Chatwind, Hudson Hope, Fort St. John, Heinz Creek, Dawson Creek, Tumbler Ridge, and back to Chatwind. They take about, I think it's six or seven days. And they stay in the community that they've stopped in. So what I would like you folks to do is, I took the maximum number of fifty people and it's six dollars and fifteen cents for a pass to the swimming pool where they could a, soak in the hot tub or relax in the sauna or go for a swim. And then they can use the showers because they're gonna need to have showers. And that's a lot of people getting cleaned up all at once. So what I wonder if you folks would be able to do is support a motion that you allow up to fifty people to get cleaned up so they can come and enjoy the city and get a flavor of the Fall Fair because it doesn't cost anything to get in on the Wednesday. Which would be three hundred and, my math was a little bit rough, but three hundred and twenty-five. If only thirty come, it wouldn't be that much. But I'm trying to get ahold of Nico. I told him I was gonna come in front of you folks today. And I'm still talking with, there's a lady in Tumbler that I have to get ahold of as well as Hudson Hope and Chatwind. So I thought I'd start home base and then work my way out. But that was, that was the gist of my presentation. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, thanks. Are there, are there any questions? Because Victoria, we, our policy doesn't allow us to make a decision or anything at this time. We have to do it later on. No, that's fine. We can definitely have a discussion, answer questions. But later on in the meeting is when we can actually have a discussion on whether it would be allowed or not.
Oh, okay.
But no, it's no apologies. It's great to have the information.
Okay.
We just can't make a decision right this moment, but later on in the meeting, we will.
Oh, okay, well.
Somebody will make a motion or not or something.
Okay, yeah, it's for three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so do you have-
That's for in kind, right? For in kind, for the use of the-
Oh, yes, yes, for, to make use of the facility. Yeah, no, I don't want cash. I just, I want the passes, please.
Great.
Any, any questions then? Well, we have Victoria here.
It's pretty clear.
Councillor Malkinson?
Actually, it might be relevant to just talk about it when it comes up. Never mind.
Okay.
Well, no, no, I'll ask you. Your worship, I'm wondering if Ms.-
Victoria.
Victoria. I'm wondering if, is it the Fall Fair every Wednesday, every year? Is that the free day? Is that right?
Wednesday, Thursdays is, there's no cost.
There's no cost?
But the chuck wagon, you have to pay to get into the chuck wagons, but you don't have to pay because you're bringing in your animals and your displays and all the flowers and people are setting up to get their food booths going.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that was our setup or not.
Yeah. Yeah, that's how the Fall Fair works right now anyways. Okay, so seeing no more questions. Thanks for coming in and giving us that information and we'll discuss it again later on in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks a lot. So next we have Ms. Sharon Miller in attendance. Hi Sharon, and you have some friends with you, it looks like?
I do have some colleagues in painting here with me. They're handing out a one-page over.
If it's okay with you, while she's handing that out, I will just go ahead and begin.
Please.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Bernier and the council for letting us continue to pursue an acceptable location for our exploring art painters group. And I'd also like to thank Jim Schut and Duncan Redfern for their promptness in dealing with this whole request. Since we read the information on the city website and the recommendation by Jim Schut that our request be declined, I think it's safe to say that we're here to try and provide some insight to our proposal to that relocation at O'Brien that goes beyond the facts and figures and hopefully persuade you to see our request through a different set of eyes. That of seeing our group as a viable and strong community program that both needs and warrants a more acceptable space. I'm going to start with a quick quote from the letter that you received from Alana from the Art Gallery. It is the third paragraph, fourth paragraph down. "This program has been a vital artistic voice in the community. The members of this program not only are showcasing their work in a yearly exhibit at the gallery, but have continued to contribute to the community in a variety of ways. Many participants give back to the, to the community by volunteering for workshops, mentoring others, and donating their artwork to local charities for auction." I'm going to just expand upon that for a moment. We've actually been doing that now for twenty-seven years. We have been under the umbrella of the Art Gallery and we appreciate that relationship. We want that relationship with the Art Gallery to continue. We have in the past and intend to continue to support the Art Gallery and the community through the many different programs. We've done the Art Auction, Pick a Painting, Art Rental Program, Spirit of the Peace Celebration. We pay membership to the Art Gallery twice yearly for the privilege of using the Bintop. We're members of the Art Society. We have one of the largest number of people attend our yearly show at the Art Gallery and we appreciate that support. Now, a bit of a plug, March twenty-seventh is the opening for our show this year. And I know several of you have always attended and we appreciate that. All of you are certainly welcome to attend. So March twenty-seventh. "We had hoped to be considered for a space in the Calvin Crook Cultural Arts Center but have been assured this is not to be. We need a space that is accessible for members with ease of entry and exit because artists carry much heavy equipment and materials with them to their painting class. Our first choice is a space of our own, where we can attend during the day, like the potters and the weavers, a space we can use more often than once a week, which is what we have now at the Bintop, a space where we can leave our canvases, our paints, and our easels. And we require that space really at no additional charge or certainly a minimal charge that we now experience at the gallery. We envision this space as a satellite, as it were, to the Art Gallery. The O'Brien Room would be an ideal space for us and a space that is accessible." I'd like to speak just briefly with the interactions we've had with Duncan Redfern. "As a group under the auspices of the Art Gallery, the Bintop Studio has numerous issues which make it inaccessible and less than desirable for any people with mobility issues, regardless of their age. They need to carry their supplies and their equipment, both up and down the ramps and stairs, just to get to the Bintop Studio. When I spoke with Duncan, we were thinking in terms of any space that the city might have in a building that might meet our needs and become available. And of the things that we talked about, the O'Brien School site seemed to be the most, the closest tie for what we needed. So we met with Alan Van Tassel over at O'Brien. We looked at two sites, the two northern classrooms. The northwest one is, was more finished, had more cupboard space, but it also had about an eight-foot area taken out of it for an office space where walls would need to be removed and whatnot. The northeast room, though, was a completely empty room, which is essentially what we need. All that would need to be put into it is a utility sink, which Alan Van Tassel said is a very minimal cost. And turning the water back on. The water on that side had been turned off. No other renovations are necessary. Like, I know the potters needed fireproof doors and exhaust fans and whatnot. We need really nothing else. The school, Alan said they would provide the tables, they would provide the chairs. The cupboards are there. We will have our own easels meant. So there are really no extra expensive costs connected to our proposal. It has very easy access with no stairs. It's a short distance to transport our materials. We could literally pull up to the front door. And it has an easy exit because it has an outside door right in that room." When we looked at the website, we didn't know what any of the facts and figures were at the time that we talked with Duncan. We found out that the school board has suggested two hundred and fifty-one dollars as the lease amount per month, which we thought was a very minimal, very minimal lease or rental. We already pay approximately sixteen hundred to the Art Gallery for two sessions, ten weeks in the fall, ten weeks in the winter. That varies depending on whether we have twenty people or twenty-three people, but it's approximately sixteen hundred. We see this as a win-win and in anything we do, I think we need to search for a win-win. A win for the city is, it's a very minimal amount of money if you look at the scheme of things for the total of a whole year and when you look at the size of the, of the city budget. So it's a, we see it as a very minimal cost increase. And for us, it's a win because we get a space with all of that easy access for us that is, that is so important. Our first request is that it be dedicated to us so that we don't have to move all of our stuff. However, we know that we also need to keep our options open. And again, I will refer to the letter from Alana in the next paragraph where she says, "There are also adult classes offered in a variety of subjects, including but not limited to photography, rug breeding, jewelry making, specialized painting classes, watercolors, acrylic offerings." And so I guess some of the possibilities might be that that space be rented out on a fee-for-service basis to other groups that need a space on other days than when we are not there or possibly on the weekends if there are workshops being- Or possibly on the weekends if there are workshops being offered. I know when the printmakers have a workshop, they have very, very heavy presses that need to be moved. And so the space could actually generate some money through, through fee-for-service to make up some of the cash. Also, maybe there's another space in another building that we haven't looked at. So again, we're open to possibilities there. This one was the one that Duncan and I came upon as being the most reasonable. Obviously, we would like to be in the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts, but have been told there is only one room for painters there and that that is being used, I believe, by Laine Dolan and that it would not facilitate the, the number of people that we have. Other than that, I guess, I guess I'd just like to say that we appreciate that, your attention during the presentation here. We are going to stay for the discussion part. That in closing, the bin top site is more appropriate for the kids' arts and crafts. It's very colorful, but they've painted the ceiling with dark paints, which reduces the light. And it's more of a kid's space than an adult's space. So we would really like you to take a second look at this alternate site for our Exploring Art group, being the O'Brien Center, and if not free, which is always good. I'm sure everybody wants free. What can we negotiate that would continue to be a win-win for the city and for our group?
Okay.
Questions?
Yes, thanks Sharon. I'll start with Counselor Parsons.
I met with this Exploring Art Group last week and I've met with the curator and administrator of the art gallery. And I'm a little confused. And that's fine. I mean, there's nothing wrong with being confused, but things evolve as we, as there's more dialogue and we get better information. But I think the thing that I learned last week from talking to the curator of the art gallery, that this is an art gallery program.
Yes.
You're not a standalone club. It's a program that was started by Edna McPhail many years ago. And I think, for me, that changed my paradigm about this, this matter. And I'm just sharing, and maybe this is an inappropriate time to share, and so rule me out of order if you so wish.
Well, later on in the meeting is when we'll actually discuss.
Yeah, okay. So this is an art gallery program.
Yes, but we're not just a group of people off the street looking for space.
The other thing I learned that is pertinent to this is that the, there will be no requests for furniture or easels, that the school district has furniture and that you're having easels made.
Yes.
And so on. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Counselor Schuman.
Thanks for your presentation, Sharon. My question is about, so you were talking about the possibility of having other events in that space that might otherwise be at the art gallery. I wonder if that would take away from our art gallery and, like, if they see a revenue from those events happening. I know that we give, you know, a bit of money every year to the art gallery to, to keep them going. We fund them. And also, I'm, my question, so I'm concerned that we would be then having events at O'Brien that might otherwise be at the art gallery, lessening the revenue that they make over there. Also, so the fees that you guys pay, that goes towards the space as well as?
We paint on thin grade plywood. They buy the plywood and Pauline's husband does the work of cutting it all into the board shapes. So that's what it includes, the use of the bin top and the purchase of the quarter-inch plywood.
So then the amount of money that you collect in your membership fees goes to the rental as well as those, those products? So in essence, the whole amount that you collect in fees then wouldn't go towards the rent at the O'Brien then? It would be a lesser amount?
It would be lesser by the amount of a few sheets of plywood, which, given, if we're looking for a win-win here, we would gladly absorb the cost of a few sheets of plywood if that's what the deal breaker is in terms of this. I appreciate your, your comment, though. I don't think Alana and the art gallery had even thought of it in terms of moving all of their programs. But I do know that they recently had a workshop, as in just ten days ago. They had a workshop in the bin top gallery that was for painting. And the comments for people coming out, basically, they said to Alana and Missy, "We will never, never do a workshop there again. We are not carrying all of our stuff all the way up and all the way back down." So that was as recent as ten days ago.
Okay.
But you're, in terms of the fees, again, in a, for, to seek for a win-win, if we need to increase our own personal fees by a bit every year in order to subsume more of the cost, that's certainly part of a negotiation that we, that we would look at as well. We want the relocation, so what can we do?
Yeah.
What can we do?
It seems pretty affordable right now, what your, what your fees are, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
So any other questions from Counsel?
I am staying for the later part for when you do your discussion, so I would be available there if you so choose as well.
Okay, and, yeah, I'm glad you came in. I mean, it's good that you've been working with Duncan as well. Obviously, your first request, hopefully you can appreciate why we were not able to look at the options of trying to get access to the upper part of that facility.
And we understand the heritage building, the height and all of that, and that is a huge expense. We would love to be in an annex of some sort right at the gallery so that everything stays there. But we've already talked to Alana. We still intend to have our shows there. We want to be under their umbrella. So ideally, I guess we would see this room at the, at the O'Brien as part of the art gallery umbrella, like a satellite or an off-campus site.
Can you give me an NAR Park 101? The other little buildings that are out there, I'm trying to remember. I know we had Archives, or who else was using some of the?
The Historical Society, I believe, has one, and they are moving to the Calvin Crook Center. Apparently, that was what Duncan said. But we didn't know what the size of that building was. Again, if that's an option, we will certainly look at it for, as another alternative. The O'Brien one does seem minimal, minimal cost and an excellent site, if that's at all possible.
Okay, any other questions then?
Just to help your 101, there's also the art gallery rental uses one of the buildings as well.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Okay, I will be here if there's further questions.
Thanks so much for coming in. So then our last delegation for the day is, we have Dustin Bodnar-Kentz and April Moy. Good morning, the two of you.
Good morning.
Give us your final tourism report, sir.
I think we should give more than ten minutes, seeing as it's last.
Hold on.
No, no, you never, you never offer that.
Don't want to drag this on too bad.
Well, good morning, Council Administration. I'm trying to use my tourism report for you guys, for all the new council. We do this about four times a year. I've kind of switched it up a little bit this go-around and provided an overview of where the tourism industry is at the current time in British Columbia, in Dawson Creek, and throughout the region. So if you can see through it, tourism is a pivotal part of, of the economy in all aspects, provincial, regional, and, and throughout communities. Tourism Dawson Creek works with a number of different partners all the way up the Alaska Highway, throughout the province, in order to ensure that what we do is capitalized to its fullest. You can see that in two thousand and nine, we did a community tourism foundation plan and worked with the village of Pouskoupi to try to work together and build cohesiveness with, with the products and services and capacity that each community had. And set forth a vision and, and a number of different goals for, for the next five years. And we're continually looking for different resources to, to ensure that those actions are fulfilled. Through the report, you'll see that there's a number of different statistics. Usually, I do a comparison year over year. This time around, I kind of did a three-year breakdown of what, you can kind of see the trends that are happening at the visitor center, Pioneer Village, bus and caravan tours, people through the Alaska Highway House. And then overall breakdown of, of where our visitor is coming from, right? Those number of people that are, that are actually walking into the visitor center and, and their, their location. One of the biggest trends that we've kind of seen over the last couple of years is the number of people from the eastern provinces, Quebec, Ontario, the Maritimes, coming to Dawson Creek and traveling through the region.
But I noticed that Asia-Australia is only two percent. You're going to be working on that, right?
Absolutely, I'll be your number one ambassador. You'll also see, as you jump over to the next page, the value of tourism. We've been very involved in a value tourism project through Tourism British Columbia a couple of years ago. And, and these numbers are extremely important for not only us as an organization, but community, the community as a whole, future investors. We've passed this report on to a number of different folks looking to invest in hotels and restaurants, et cetera. One thing to just point out is that we always look at the numbers of people coming through the visitor center, but those aren't always all the people that travel to a community on their trip. If a person traveling, traveling to British Columbia stopped at every visitor center, they'd be stopping a hundred and ten different times at a particular visitor center. So it's also important to track the number of people that are actually staying in hotels and spending time in the community. Jumping over, I kind of gave you a kind of overview of a number of different tourism Dawson Creek programs and services that we provide to our stakeholders, marketing initiatives, et cetera. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that right now. The last couple of months, we've kind of been focusing on finishing up our, the 2012 Visitor and Community Guide, which will be going to print soon, as well as attending a couple consumer shows on behalf of Northern British Columbia Tourism Association in different RV destination markets.
Dustin, could you talk a little bit about the Northern BC app?
Yeah, absolutely.
The new counselors haven't heard that.
Okay, perfect. So the, the future of destination marketing is shifting from websites to mobile devices. And a consortium of Northern BC communities, including Dawson Creek, Prince Rupert, Smithers, Terrace, and Prince George, work together with Northern BC Tourism Association to make this, make this project happen. And it's a, it's a mobile device, mobile application that lives on iPhones, iPads, and Android devices. And it has a listing of every hotel, accommodation, restaurant, activity to do in Northern BC. So when the, when a traveler is in their RV or walking down the street, they can locate and get contact information for, for the things that they want to see and do.
They can also, if it's an iPhone, they can also get GPS directions to it.
Absolutely. They all have GPS directions, and I don't actually have my phone with me today, but you can actually hold, hold up the device and it'll actually kind of map and pinpoint where, where you are and where things are on that street as a reference point. Counselor McFadden?
Thank you, your worship. I'm interested in, I see a page here, I don't know what number it is. It talks about the annual direct expenditures. It has fifty-four million, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then above it, it has Dawson Creek. Is that the total since two thousand and eight?
Nope, that, great question. So that's an overview of four different value of tourism studies that were done between two thousand and seven and two thousand and nine. We did our project in two thousand and eight.
Okay.
And that's an overview of the amount of visitation to the community in that calendar year.
Yes.
And the annual direct expenditures of those visitors.
Fifty-four million to the city of Dawson Creek, or spent in, in the city.
Expenditures by visitors in the city of Dawson Creek.
One year.
That's correct.
Excellent. Counselor Parsons?
I have a number of questions on the report. I'm a little confused. Do you, when I go to Elastera House to visit you, as I have done on a number of occasions, or to ask just a little question where something is, am I included as a visitor? Or to the museum or Mile Zero? Does that make me a visitor?
When, when you're, when we do our tracking for, for statistics, that's a great question. There's, there's a number of questions that the visitor center council staff that are there kind of prod from, from individuals in order to know where they're coming from. So it might not be a direct five, five questions that they ask right away, but through, through just general conversation. And then we, we tick different boxes on our statistics sheet based on whether that's a local, someone from the region, someone from Alberta, someone from Ontario, BC resident, et cetera. So we kind of have an idea of how many people from the local community are using the services and how many people from abroad are, are using our services as well.
Supplement to that question, I'm just really, the thing that primed me was your pie graphs. So you might want to refer to those as I'm speaking. Where, the question that you have in your report is, where is our visitor coming from? And so sixteen percent are local residents, and of course, your second pie graph refers to Northern British Columbia as a, as a tourism unit. If we ignore that pie graph, just refer to the top one. Sixteen percent of the visitors. And then I looked at your report and I go to what I thought was maybe a definition, second paragraph, tourists or visitors to Dawson Creek. Well, I'm not a visitor to Dawson Creek, and yet we include local residents in the report here. And my question I'm leading to is, I do know that you're, from my conversations with you and with your predecessor, you calculate the value of tourism by some, for every visitor, how much they spend, and you've done some studies on that. Am I included in that calculation?
These are two completely different, like, when you're looking at the value of tourism numbers with, with that evaluation compared to the number of people walking into the visitor center, those are two completely different sets of statistics. And no, you would not be calculated into the overall value. What, what this shows on, on the pie graph is the number of people that, that utilize the services and walk into the Dawson Creek Visitor Center. All right, so that kind of, it gives us a kind of quick overview, not a strong estimate, but a overview of where that, where that person's coming from. It's great to see that sixteen percent of our local community is utilizing the services of the museum. And most times, it's, it's the, the residents that, that often champion what's happening in the community and the visitor center by, by bringing their relatives and loved ones when, when people are, you know, visiting Dawson Creek during the summer months or throughout the course of the year.
One last comment, if I may, two comments. I know you're leaving and I want to say publicly, I've appreciated my interactions with you and the work you've done. One of the things I've heard from a number of sources, and I was talking to a fellow council person last week, the same topic came up. Some visitors and some business people have said, you know, it's, they get the impression that when people go to the visitor center, they're basically told about all the wonderful things that lie up the highway. And the impression is, get on with your journey, get out of town and go, go north. And some people believe that, well, I for one believe that we have a lot to offer in our local peace region and that maybe more effort could be made to develop packages, right? That, I'm just making this one up, so we have some wonderful photographers in our community, I would say, maybe nationally renowned photographers. Why couldn't we come up with a photography package for people? I mean, there's so many wonderful things here. It's in that vein, you know, if they could take a, well, when you go to other places, I mean, I go to Europe a lot, and, you know, there's wonderful packages that anchor me in Florida. I go to Europe a lot, and you know, there's wonderful packages that anchor me in Florence or wherever I may be, right? And some people think we could be doing more of that. And that's obviously a partnership with other people. So I just want to make that comment.
Jim, you want to say something?
Yeah, through your worship, I can't leave that statement unchallenged, okay? It's absolutely not true, what Counselor Parslow is saying about how visitors there are treated. And those of you from council who have done the Ambassador for a Day program know that actually what you're trained to do is the reverse. The people of Visitor Info are, their whole focus is to try to get you to spend some dollars in this community. And yes, there's information provided for up the highway, but that is not the training. And those of you who have done it, get one day of training on how to take those visitors and convert them into cash in the community.
Counselor Kenny?
I might, I might want to add to that too, is that the Alaska Highway is the tourist destination. Like you need a destination for people to come. And right now, really, none of the communities in the Peace Region have a specific destination, standalone destination, that's going to bring people from California to the, to the region. The destination is the Alaska Highway, and that is what brings people. The people in the States and California, when you look at all the stats or talk to these people, they're coming because of the Alaska Highway. They're not coming because of Dawson Creek or Fort St. John or, or Fort Nelson. It is the Alaska Highway. So that's the draw, that's how we get them here. And then, then they're in our community, and then that's where you go into the Visitor Information Center and you see everything that our community has to offer, and you have the ambassador program. But we do have to still emphasize the Alaska Highway for our tourism destination until we can come up with something else.
Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, and I'm just reading here, Lasting Memories Program, Weddings and Reunions, Bear Mountain Wind Park, Dawson Creek Merchant Coupon Book. I think these are all efforts to keep the money in Dawson Creek and have them stay for that extra amount of time. And I do enjoy the Counselor for a Day, Counselor to Counselor, and I do know that we're busy promoting Dawson Creek extensively while we're there.
Yeah, and the Counselor to Counselor program will be in effect again in, in June for when we celebrate Tourist in Your Own Town Month. And yeah, we definitely encourage all council and if the administration wants to stop by for a couple hours and greet and visit with guests, just to follow up with Mr. Schute's comments, absolutely. Our traveler Visitor Center counselors are trained with Dawson Creek in mind. All of them, of course, are, are from the Dawson Creek area and, and have traveled up the Alaska Highway and have experienced the, the greatness that places like Leard Hot Springs and, and White Horse and Dawson City have to offer. But we also know that, that those people are going to be eventually getting there, and it's all about that visitor experience. So yes, we're, we're creating, we're creating that atmosphere where we want them to stay in our community for a longer period of time and extend that, stay from two hours to a day, from day and a half to, to three days. But we know eventually that they're going to be on their trip up the Alaska Highway.
Counselor Schuman?
And speaking of the Alaska Highway, can you give us a little update on what's happening with the whole getting it recognized or?
I'm actually going to pass that over to April, and she can fill you in on that one.
Thanks for your question. Right now, the, the project to nominate the Alaska Highway as a National Historic Site of Canada kicked into gear in September when the Peace River Regional District committed funding over a three-year period to undertake the research, which entails working with communities to identify the cultural landscape and particular assets that are included in a submission report to the Historic Sites and Monuments Board of Canada. And the target date for that submission is 2013. A heritage and preservation firm from Ottawa, Content Works, has been contracted to undertake that work. And Julie Harris, President of Content Works, will actually be traveling through the area next week. And we're putting meetings in place with various stakeholders, and there is a meeting planned next Friday in Dawson Creek on the 17th. A meeting of the Alaska Highway Community Board, and then we are also, also opening up a couple of hours to invite various stakeholders to attend that meeting. And it's been a little bit tricky putting all of these meetings together, so the, so the notice is coming, will be coming out. And the Alaska Highway Community Board, of course, has representation from each of the communities in northeastern BC, as well as those with whom the organization holds an MOU, which are, is the Northeast Native Advancing Society and the Peacefully Heart Regional Arts Council. So essentially, we're gathering information for the, for the findings report to, to really, which will really assess the, the challenges and the opportunities and certainly the barriers that will be encountered for moving forward with the project. So that'll give a real honest assessment of where we are. But meanwhile, there is work proceeding. We do have, the Northeast Native Advancing Society has committed a substantial amount of funding to a First Nation story collecting project that relates specifically to the stories about the construction and the impact of the construction of the Alaska Highway and also the community of Taylor has committed funding to a Taylor Memory Project, which will also include their story in relation to the highway. So, so all of these things are coming together, and hopefully, the findings, the findings report will, will give us the definite green light to keep moving forward with all the work that's to be done in northeastern BC, and then also connecting with our Yukon partners who are just waiting in the wings for us to start moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So April, before I say goodbye to Dustin, I want to make him feel uncomfortable, I'll sit going looking for his replacement.
Thanks for your question. We are, we're starting the process and have interviews planned for today. So we're, we're, we're just, we're moving forward, we're being thoughtful and considering all of the, the current status and, and how Tourism Dawson Creek has evolved over these years. So we want to be very careful about our replacement for Dustin, he's done a fantastic job. We also do have with the administration of the contract through Northern British Columbia Tourism, we have all the resources, our manpower and the Prince George Office, of course, to assist us with continuing the work. And both Keltie and Joyce are on deck to, to take on good, more responsibility if required as we move forward, so we're confident that'll be good.
With that said, Lee, Dustin, I want to invite you up, I want to shake your hands and say thanks very much for all of the years of service you've had with Tourism Dawson Creek. And I know we've come a long way with your tenure, and you're in the saddle in this, but I know as you're sitting on the beach with your sandals and tachys.
You'll be thinking of us.
In the wintertime, I'm sure, but please go forward. Just on behalf of council, again, I just want to thank you, I've partied for you in a parting gift, and again, thanks for everything you've done and all the memories you have.
Wow, I'll be quick.
Thank you.
It's been a privilege to work with council and work with staff. It's been a great four years. I moved up to the Peace Region for a three-month contract, and five months later, five years maybe, I'm still here, which I've heard a lot of. It's, it's, it's been, it's been amazing. The things that we've been able to accomplish, I've, I always enjoyed sending emails out to colleagues in Vancouver, telling them that, you know, we, we just hosted the National Wintaki Olympic event here, and we're, we're bidding for big events, which, you know, municipalities down there, they just don't do. And we've been able to not only do it, but make this a successful event. Like April said, the, the staff at Tourism Dawson Creek, Northern BC Tourism, we've created such great synergies and partnerships that I know that the organization's in good hands. So thanks again, and sorry if I took more than five minutes.
I didn't mean to cut you off, April, was there anything else you wanted?
No, just to thank Dustin, that's fine, thank you.
Thanks, and we look forward to having you come back and introducing the luck list.
Yes, for sure.
Something to fill up the pictures.
No hugs.
I think I need to.
So with that, that concludes the delegations. Let's take a recess for a few minutes, so we'll drop another.
Moving right along.
Okay, and we're going to call the meeting back to order, and we will go back to where we left off in the agenda, which would be 7/3. And 7/3 is the report 12-022 from the Chief Administrative Officer, and this is regarding the Exploring Arts. And you'll see that there was a couple of things that were attached to this, and then a recommendation from staff. Yeah, Counselor Schuman?
So I would move the recommendation, I don't have it up, just a second.
Did you want to read it?
That report number ADM 12-022 from the Chief Administrative Officer, Re-Exploring Arts Group, be received. Further, the council declined to provide a combination for the Exploring Arts Group. That's the recommendation.
And that's what you're moving?
Yes.
And seconded by Counselor Wilber, and discussion from council. Counselor Wilber?
In reading through a very large agenda, I did do some homework. So it seems to me that council received a letter on November 19th, and I guess that would have been from Alana Hall, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong? Okay. So in her letter, she stated that many program participants, so not just one program, but many programs had an issue with accessibility to the Bintop. And then the letter from the Exploring Arts Group, which basically is advocating that and, and more so for your own group. And so in having, staff having gone and talked to the school board, it seems to me that the art gallery itself has a proposal package to take to the school board to rent a room on their own for their groups.
I don't think they have a package, but it's our.
I guess, sorry, I mean, the opportunity to put that package forward.
Yeah, we would want to stay under the umbrella of the art gallery that it's dealt with through them.
So just on, sorry Sharon, just on process, so there's, the discussion will take place just with council.
Okay, sorry.
So my feeling is that it's not really an issue that council needs to look after, like this is not something that falls under the city, it falls under the art gallery. So it seems to me with all the information that they've put forward to us, and now having the information from the school board at $215 a month, really the art gallery should be able on their own to put a proposal package forward to the school board to rent space at O'Brien.
Instead of going through the city, is what you're saying?
Instead of going through the city.
Okay, Counselor Parslow was next.
Just information as I understand it, I'm sure the CAO will correct me if I'm wrong. The city currently leases that portion of the O'Brien store.
The gym.
The gym and the reception areas from the school district. And I think when I made the motion, last meeting I think it was, it was the view that the city might extend the lease to this supplementary facility. But I, it's struggling, I'll have to vote against this recommendation. And my thinking, as I think I shared earlier, is evolved on this, because when I first, we first had this issue brought to us, it was as if the Exploring Arts Group was a club or something like, of that nature. But this is really the art gallery program. And I think that this matter needs to be, this should be a request from the art gallery to the city, not the Exploring Arts Group to the city. Because as was referred to in the delegation, the art gallery does have issues that some groups cannot access because of just of equipment and so on. So I'm thinking in my, my mind that this classroom would be, if you like, an off-site campus, if that's the, if you understand the concept, for the art gallery. And as I'm thinking about the future, the Calvin Crook Cultural Center, you know, and its status, let's say next September, I am also thinking that, you know, we wouldn't consider requests from, let's say, a group that uses the Calvin Crook Center. We would want the Calvin Crook Center, if it needs supplementary space, to make, make applications to the city. So to me, the arrangement is between the city and the school district, and that this request for a use of a room should be coming from the art gallery, because the art gallery has need of this, not just for this one group, but there's other groups. And I think that, as was referred to in the, in the presentation as well, that the art gallery would, would pay the lease cost to the city, and the city, because the lease would be between the city and the school district. But it would be able to recoup its costs, not only from the revenue generated from the Exploring Arts Group, but also from other groups, whether they be other art classes, craft classes, who, who choose for accessibility issues to use this supplementary facility for its programs. So I'll, I'll have to vote against this, this motion.
Okay, I have Counselor Schuman and Kenny.
Great. So my issue is one that I think about, so we, we pay for space for this group to have space at the, at the O'Brien Center. And we're setting a precedent then, and how many are going to come knocking on our door to also have a space provided to them in, in some place in the city? I, I just think that if this space is needed by the art gallery, that the art gallery either come to us and, and work something out, but that the art gallery would, would fund it, or the, the groups would fund the space and, and not the city. That's my thoughts on it. That's why I'll be voting in, in favor of declining to provide the accommodation.
Counselor Kenny?
Boy, I'm glad that everybody is, is saying what they're saying, because it's exactly what I've been thinking, is that this, this proposal should be coming from, from the art, art gallery, because it is part of an art gallery program. And with the opportunity, if they, they come through with a proposal, there, there is an opportunity to rent it out for other, other programs with, that they are already delivering. And so it's actually, you know, an opportunity that they would be more likely to be able to pay rental space for that. So it would be a win-win for, for everyone under that one group, because it is difficult to, to give to one group and not the other, because you're presenting, you're presenting as, as one group. And, and it makes, that makes it difficult. That was the part that I was struggling with. So I will definitely be supporting the motion that's been recommended to us today.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Parslow, you had one more?
In spite of what I've heard, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
The amendment would begin after, if you read the motion, that report number ADM 12-022 from the Chief Administrative Officer, Re-Exploring Arts Group, be received. Further, that council advise the art gallery, this is the amendment, council advise the art gallery to consider making a request for the use of the O'Brien classroom, of an O'Brien classroom, for the art gallery's programming use.
At their cost?
Well, unfortunately, this, I mean, that's kind of contrary to the actual motions on the floor, which is to decline, but you could probably add it, I'm thinking. on the floor, which is to decline, but you could probably add it, I'm thinking, to the end of that, because you don't want to change the intent of the motion. The motion right now is to decline the request from the Exploring Arts Group, which personally I think should be captured in the motion, but you can say decline to the arts group with a letter going to the art gallery.
Thank you for your suggestion.
That would probably be in line?
So that's my amendment, as per your advice.
Okay. Did you catch that? Okay. So is that seconded by anyone?
What's seconded?
Counselor Malkinson is seconding. So we'll vote on the amendment first, all those in favor of the amendment. Anyone opposed? So the amendment is carried, so we're back to the motion as amended, and any further discussion from council on that? Counselor Wilber.
Is there a reason in particular that they need to come to city council? Is there something in our lease agreement? I mean, we leased the gym and the entranceway, right, to O'Brien? I just think for fast-track reasons and for betterment for the art gallery, that if they take their proposal directly to the school board, the school board could lease them that classroom, they've already been given a price of $215 a month through the city, so that gives them grounds to work on. And as the art gallery as a whole, I'm failing to understand why they need to come to city council with this.
I might be incorrect, and so I'm going to ask Jim on this one, but the reason why the art group, Exploring Arts Group, probably couldn't do it directly, or the art gallery, I'm not sure, is there's insurance and liability and access and...
Through your worship, I'm not sure that the school board has taken a definitive position on that, but when deciding to lease to the city, all of those issues were in play before the board would consider leasing it to the city. It was a combination of the city having appropriate insurance, the city having appropriate maintenance staff, basically having paid staff to supervise the uses. I think it would be problematic for the art gallery to meet the same requirements, but I don't know that the school district's been asked by anyone but the city.
Okay. Now, under the, under the request, if we were to approve it, I'm just, right now, the motion is to decline, but if we were to approve it, does that mean, if I understand correctly, that the Exploring Art Group would not have a key to a room, that we, because of liability, it would still be, city staff have to be there letting them in, present when they're there, and letting them leave and lock up, and all that kind of stuff?
My understanding of the motion, your worship, is if it passes, no further action is taken until and unless the art gallery brings forward a proposal to you.
Yes, no, I agree, I'm just asking, I'm not debating, right now it's to decline. I'm just trying to wrap around my head for voting purposes.
My understanding is, the conditions of our lease with the school district is that any use taking place under our use has a minimal amount of supervision from the city, which is to say, we ensure that the building is properly opened and properly closed, nothing is left on, that the building is maintained. It's our responsibility as the leaseholder to make sure that the building is kept safe.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Just information as I understand it, the, things like the washrooms, for instance, I mean, that portion of the facility that are currently being leased by the city, and I just think that we need to have one tidy package here, that this, and I can see in my head, you know, other organizations wanting to use portions of facility on a time-to-time basis, and we have just one body dealing with it, because the city's dealing with the entrance, I imagine, clearing of snow, making sure that there's safe entry and exit from the facility. And as we've just know, that this particular classroom has its own emergency exit, well, we need to make sure that the snow is removed from that as well. So I just see it as being part of a package, a total city responsibility.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Yeah, my only other comment is, I don't mind if it goes back to the art gallery, I mean, we need to, I mean, it's an important group, it's, but the arts as a whole are important to the community. My only, my gut reaction is, obviously, there's 15 classrooms in there, and if you, we've turned down people in the past that have asked for the city to pay for space, and sports group asking for space, and to Counselor Schuman, if you allow one group, not an organization, I guess one group, is that setting a precedent now for every other group to come forward and say, well, there's still another classroom, rent it for me? So it's good if it goes back to the art gallery and then... Okay? Any other comments from council? So the motion as amended is what we're voting on then, so all those in favor? Anyone opposed? So the next one we have then, we're jumping over to where we left off at seven seven. And seven seven is Report 12-019 from the Chief Financial Officer, and this is our gaming report from 2011.
I'd like to move that Report Number ADM-12-019 from the Chief Financial Officer, re-gaming report, December 31st, 2011, be received for information.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any discussion or questions? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And seven eight is Report 12-013 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, and this is regarding our sports field road extension. Counselor Schuman? Waiting to see if somebody else will put their hand up.
She's quick.
I want to make this recommendation, that Report Number ADM-12-013 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, read the sports field road extension be received, further that council approve, approve an extension of the sports field road to 122nd Avenue, including a full-access intersection with speed bump paving-only entrances, complete with concrete box drainage culvert at 122nd Avenue, and further that $295,000 for the project be identified in the 2012 capital plan for budget discussions.
Okay. Is that seconded? Counselor Wilber? I'm just going to, I'll speak first to this one, because I want council to know where I am, I'm going to vote against this. And the reason being is, I've been liking, I've been wanting to see this for quite a few years, but if we're going to be doing it, we should be doing it all the way. Staff put the recommendation forward because they feel that one of the issues is access in and out. I believe just as important in that is paving the roadway. When we have some of the issues we have with the rocks, with the, you know, if we pave it, we can actually put speed bumps through the entire thing, and more than likely, if it's going into the capital plan, it might, for the 295,000, I'm assuming might be under the borrowing for the capital plan, hard to say, but if we're going to be doing that, I personally would rather just see us spend the 675 and do it once, and do it right, and do it completely. So that's my comments there. Counselor McFadden?
I'm just wondering why we needed a motion on this in the first place? Wouldn't it just be part of the normal capital budget, if that's what Mr. Henderson wants to do, or Mr. Dolan, or whoever wrote this?
Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, the reason you have it here instead of just as a proposal in this afternoon's budget meeting is that you identified this as a strategic priority in your strategic priority setting, that we would bring you a design and a proposal, so this is responsive to your direction and strategic planning.
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. I got Counselor Parslow and then Schuman.
So if this motion is approved as presented, it will, of course, be subject to the funding being provided in the budget.
Still has to go through that, yes.
I'm little, I know other people have requested speed bumps in certain parts of the community, and the city staff have said that speed bumps are not possible because of snow clearing, or words that affect. This is all what I've been told. So if speed bumps are not possible to put on roads in certain parts of the city, why are they, is it possible to put a speed bump on this road?
Now, there are different types of speed bumps, but Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, a couple of points on that. The, it's not impossible to put speed bumps on traveled roadways, it's just makes it more problematic on snow removal. We, we have had directors of infrastructure who were vehemently opposed to them, the current director is not vehemently opposed, just makes you aware of the implications each time. And I don't believe you have turned down a speed bump in the last six years, I think it was previous to that. But in any event, this is envisioned as primarily a seasonal road. This is a road, we understand your, we understood your strategic concern to be access for soccer and ball. Soccer and ball don't happen in the winter. We were assuming, that's another reason why the recommendation is for gravel rather than paving, it was our assumption is that we would be doing very little snow removal on this road, perhaps in advance of large concerts only. If Kiss came back, we might plow the road for the Kiss concert, but our assumption was this was going to be primarily a seasonal road.
Okay, Counselor Schuman and then Malkinson?
So I'm going to speak in favor of this recommendation. I think that down the road, we certainly could pave the whole thing. I feel that it's very important that we get this opened up so that we have safety down there. I frequent that road throughout the spring months as we play ball and drop our kids to soccer, and it's a bloody zoo down there. And I just, I really feel that we need to do this, and you know what, we can come back and pave the whole thing and do speed bumps later on. I, I want to, I want to get this done. Thank you.
Counselor Malkinson?
Your worship, on the original motion that Ms. Schuman made, what is she referring to with the full-access intersection? I'm sure Mr. Henderson could be able to answer that.
Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, the options that you have at any intersection are, you can have full movements, meaning anyone can turn right or left coming out of the intersection, or turn right or left into the intersection from the avenue. Or you can have various restrictions. So one of the restrictions you can look at is called right-in, right-out. So the only way to access it would be to turn right into it, and the only way to get out of it would be to turn right out of it. The reason you would restrict access for an intersection is because you're trying to make the traffic go in a particular direction. The recommendation from the Director of Infrastructure is that this intersection, to meet your access concerns, to make, to meet the issues that you identified in strategic planning, needs to be a full-movement intersection where someone could go down that road and turn left to the swimming pool or multiplex, or they could turn right to exit out back to the business area, and people coming either way on the avenue need to be able to access into the soccer park area, that's why the recommendation for full movement.
Okay, yeah.
And I'm, I also thought we had gravel, speed bumps or something like that over the gravel right now, didn't we?
We do, we have some of those removable ones, I believe, in a few areas down there, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, this doesn't seem like too much of a problem with me, and I think that we could pave it later, and I think it's likely that I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow, I'm sorry, was your hand up?
I'm not sure, it might have been stretched.
Sorry, maybe it was Counselor Kenny, then, I just saw a hand over here, thank you.
I'll be supporting this motion, and I know from the people that I've talked to, they're going to be really happy to see that road opened up, as Cheryl was saying. I guess it's quite a zoo, bringing your children down there. And I think this is a good start.
Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, so initially, I was quite in favor of the only one-way-out option, but then looking at the idea of access for additional parking when we do have events, I mean, I parked there without, I mean, I jumped the ditch and, you know, get over there, it's not a big deal for me, but I can see that in the, you know, having that access to the parking for our events is, is great. And with those speed bumps that we do have with the gravel, I think that it won't be a problem with, with the traffic going both ways.
Okay, any other comments from council? Counselor Parslow?
I'm tending to vote against this, because I'm kind of interested in what you had to say. So would you care to expand a little more? Maybe an amendment to this?
Sure, well, I was actually contemplating that. I 100% agree with all the comments. It's not that I don't want to see that open, I've been trying to see if we can get this on the budget for quite a few years now. You know, as you know, I'm down there quite a bit through the summer months, and it is quite a hassle. So I'm completely in favor of where the recommendation was going. My only thought was, if we're going to be doing it, let's just, instead of piecemealing it and doing part of it now for 295,000, and then down the road going and paving, I thought, why not just spend the 600,000 and do it completely now, instead of having to go pavement, gravel, pavement, and piecemealing it? I just thought for the 695, or whatever it was, 75,000, that it would be more conducive to the budget to completely, complete it at one time. I'm thinking from the community perspective, they would look at that and say, we only did half a job. The main point, though, is that it is open, and I 100% agree with that. That's what I'd love to see in the full access, is, I'm completely supportive of. Counselor Schuman, you got one more?
Yeah, I don't think we need to spend that, that big lump sum right now. I think that having those nice ruts and, you know, all that stuff, I think that further slows down the traffic. The only thing with regards to paving it...
It's part of our overall traffic calming strategy.
I, you know, anyways, now you made me forget where I was going there. Shoot, shoot, anyways, I, I, I don't, I don't want to spend the big money, I think we can do this, get it open, go back later. The only thing that, oh, yeah, that's what I was going to say, the only thing, I have concerns over the dust created when we're going through there, but I think that, you know, people will be happy just getting it open, and we can go back in another budget and spend whatever it costs to pave it. Thank you.
Okay. Any final comments, Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. And, or do I? Should it be tabled? Let's see, maybe I need some help from the Chief Administrative Officer in this, but the intent of my amendment is that we, let's just go back, do we know how much it will cost to pave this?
Yes.
What was that figure? I missed it.
675,000 is the full job.
On the first page, there is the three different options.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I'm just focusing on the recommendation. Yeah. Okay, so I would like to move amendment that would begin after maybe 122nd Avenue, a part of the motion. Is, okay, which part? The third line states that Report Number ADM-12-013 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development be sports field road extension be received, further that council approve an extension of the sports field road to 122nd Avenue, including a full-access And I would maybe with speed bump and delete the word only, after paving-only entrance. And further, 600 and whatever, thousand dollars, whatever it is for the project be identified.
Okay, thank you. So I just have to ask Brenda, though, has that changed the intent? Or is...
Totally.
We're still opening it up? Does that change the intent of the motion, or is he just...
Through your worship, the amendment would be voted on.
Yeah. Okay. So the amendment is still to open it all, but it's basically Recommendation One instead of Three on the front page.
That's why, yeah, your worship, I think it would be contrary to the original motion, because it's obviously not one of the original motions.
Yeah.
Not one of the...
No, but you can, no, but a council can make a motion to amend that, and then it's up to council to vote on it, unless it's completely contrary.
The intent is to open it up, isn't it? Which would affect the how it will be.
Yeah, through your worship, the reason for the prohibition of amendments that are contrary is so that you don't have, end up with a confusing motion, but if the motion is amended in the fashion Counselor Parslow has suggested, the direction will be clear. It will be to do the project, it will just be to do a different version of the project. So I think if the amendment passes, you're going to be fine for the direction. It's going to be clear what you have directed.
Sure. So the, yeah, so the amendment adding to that, so it's still opening up, doing everything, it's just, instead of just leaving the center part gravel, it's paving the whole thing, that's the amendment, to allow the 675 in the budgets to have 295. Does that make sense?
That's how I read it.
Okay. So do I have a second here for that motion? No?
I'll second.
Okay. So Counselor Kenny then?
Sure.
Seconded. So on the amendments, the amendment is to do basically number one, which is pave the whole thing.
Which is what you wanted.
Yes. So on the amendment, speaking on the amendments, Counselor Schuman?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to vote against it. I don't want to spend the 600, 700, 800... I, I don't want to spend the $600,000, $700,000, $800,000, whatever, $1,000,000 on this.
$675,000.
Yeah, because we always come in right on budget there.
It is, it is contract.
For a half million.
Paving is contract.
I, I, I want to spend $300,000, and not, and, and take $300,000 to the budget, instead of taking $700,000 to the budget and then risking it not getting in there. That's mine. I, I'm going to vote against the amendment.
Okay, that's fine. Any other comments, Counselor Wilber?
I, I actually share Counselor Schuman's thinking is that at $295,000, and putting it in budget discussions, it's more likely to happen this budget than if we take it to $700,000, I'm rounding it up here, that it may not be feasible. Given where this avenue is, this sports field complex has been a process of steps, so I don't think, I think the public will be happy to have it open and have a throughway during the seasons, and understanding that it's the next step, and there's one more to go to finish it. I don't see the community as seeing that as a bad point, and I just think it's more likely that we're going to get it open and in budget at $295,000.
Okay.
So that's my thought process.
Excellent. Any, yeah, on the, on the amendments, so all those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? And it's defeated? So on the, back to the, thank you. Back to the original motion. Good thing we have four or five chairs here. Back to the original motion, any further discussion? Probably not. I think we kicked that one around. So on the original motion, which is the recommendation that was read out, just so everybody knows what we're voting on. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Parslow? But it is carried. It is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry if I made that one last longer than it should have, but I had to get my points in. So the next one is 7-9, and that's Report 12-009, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, and this is for remedial action for 1537 on 96th Avenue. Counselor Malkinson?
Your worship, I move that the report from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development be received, and that council propose a remedial action requirement to completely remove the fire damaged structure no later than March 19th, 2012, and further that staff be directed to notify the owner of the subject property as per the requirements of the community charter, and further that the owner be advised that a request for reconsideration by council must be received in writing no later than February 15th, 2012, and further that should the work not be completed by March 19th, that staff be directed through the employees and contractors to enter onto the property and complete the remedial action requirement. Am I, yeah, it's remedial, action requirement to completely remove the fire damaged structure and recover its costs from the owner by adding such costs to property taxes for the property.
Good job. Seconded by Counselor McFadden. Any discussion on this? Counselor?
Your worship, I wanted to ask if our staff anticipate any problems with this.
Good question, Jim?
Through your worship, it is often the case that the owner will find our timelines too constraining for removal, and it's fairly normal that before February 15th, you would get a letter seldom disputing your order but asking for a different timeline. In the past, you have been sensitive to the construction season, and you have granted those. I, we have nothing yet from the owner, so it's possible that the owner won't dispute this.
Okay. Any other questions then? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. We'll move to 7-10, which is Report 12-010, and this is from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for a development permit application at 32 Vic Turner Road for Pipe Works Limited. Counselor McFadden?
I move that report number ADM-12-010, from the Director of Infrastructure, be received, and further that development permit application 12-01 for Pipe Works Limited be received, and that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for development permits, and authorized to issue development permit to Pipe Works for the establishment of a temporary pipe storage yard upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period.
Thank you.
And receipt of the financial amount of $5,000. Thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Parslow. Any questions on this? Aside from the fact to comment that it's filling up very quickly, I think there's only one or two lots down there, I believe, that are not officially spoken for, so it's nice to see that area fill up. Any other comments? So Counselor Schuman?
This isn't airside, right? It's not airside, or strip side, or what did they call it?
No, it's, it's not. This is part of the Rorison Industrial Park. This is not city land, if that's what you're wondering.
Yeah, no, I was just, so that's this side of the, you know, you know what I'm getting at?
Yes.
Do you know what I'm getting at?
This is at the east end, close to the east end of the runway, but not quite. So Jim, do you want to...
Yeah, through your worship, this particular parcel is one which can be developed without interfering with flight path to a certain height, and their development permit application is within the required heights. The parcel that is immediately to the east of there is not developable because of the flight path.
Okay. Thank you.
That's what your concern was, I'm assuming?
I knew that that would sort of be taken care of. I was just thinking about the sustainability plan for the airport and wondered if it was...
Good.
...to do with that.
Okay. Any other comments? So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. 7-11, this is Report 12-023, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, and this is for the appointments to our Board of Variants. Counselor Kenny?
I'll move the recommendation that report number ADM-12-023, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, regarding Board of Variance appointments be received, and further that Doug Reagan, Michael Dionne, and Arlen Dokken be appointed to the City of Dawson Creek Board of Variance.
Seconded by Counselor Parslow. Any questions? Counselor McFadden?
That's a three-year term, is it?
Yes, it is.
Annual?
I thought it was three-year, but I could be wrong. Kevin?
Three-year.
Thank you.
Good. And on that, we should also thank the three people that were on previously for their work, and welcome the other three people on, then, if approved. So all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. And thanks to them for putting their names forward, because we do have these community, or these groups like this, where we rely on volunteers to come forward to help out. On that, we move to bylaws. We have 8-1, and on 8-1, I'm going to be inviting Counselor Kenny as acting mayor to come forward and share this one here, as I have to declare a conflict, being that it's the property next to my house.
Okay, so we're looking for a report, a motion for a report number ADM-12-15, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the Alaska Highway, whoa, where's Mr. Mayor's notes?
I'd also move this recommendation.
Is it, whoa, is that what we're talking about here?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, okay. Booster station improvements cost sharing.
Yeah, I'll make the motion if you, I'd be pleased to make the motion. So I'll read the...
A seconder?
I need to make, read the motion, I think. That report number ADM-12-015, from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, read the Alaska Highway Booster Station Improvements Cost Sharing Be Received. Further, that 1, a latecomer charge pursuant to Sections 93-6A of the Local Government Act be imposed upon the owner of the land legally described as the remainder of the northwest quarter of Section 22, Township 78, Range 15, W Sitzem, Peace River District, brackets, the latecomer parcel, payable as a condition of the owner of the latecomer parcel connecting to or using the City of Dawson Creek Water System. 2, the amount of the latecomer charge shall be $113,778.14 plus interest on that amount calculated annually at the rate established by the City, by City of Dawson Creek latecomer charge interest rate establishment by law number 4129, 2012, for the period beginning on September 3, 2010, being the date of completion of the excess or extended service. The Alaska Highway Booster Station upgrades to the date the charge becomes payable under Paragraph 1. That's the motion.
Seconder? Should it? Discussion? Counselor McFadden?
$113,000, can someone explain the significance of that to me? Is that for the whole quarter section, or per, maybe? Yeah, thank you.
Through you, through you, Madam Chair, the total cost of the upgrade was three times that. Initially, the City of Dawson Creek paid a third. The owner of the parcel to the east of this parcel paid a third, and now we're suggesting that this parcel owner pay a third if they connect to the water system. It's a three-way split of the cost. The benefit of the upgrade benefits the two new subdivision areas, but it also benefits the general city in that sector of town.
Good. Thank you.
Good. All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
And you're not quite done. We need three readings of the bylaw.
Oh, okay. Counselor Schuman?
I'll move the first of three readings.
Second. Counselor McFadden? Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
Whoa. What a deal. A tower.
I know.
Thanks, Counselor Kenny. And I assume you didn't do mayor's business then, so I can go into that?
Oh, we got that all done.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll bring up mayor's business. A few things I just wanted to say over the last week or two, which has been exciting, is I want to say thanks to the Kiwanis Club. They invited me to one of their breakfast meetings here last Thursday. I always enjoy getting out and speaking with community groups and answering questions, and the 15 minutes of asking and answering questions turned into about an hour and a half. But it's all good, worthwhile time, being able to, be able to give people information of where we are in the city, so thanks to them. And also Kiwanis Band. I had a lot of fun on Saturday night, and Counselor Schuman and her husband and the group worked really hard to have the aloha night, and it was really exciting to see them bring in the entire roasted pig for that. It was quite, quite a great event. It looked like it was sold out, correct?
Sold out.
Sold out, so congratulations to them.
Roaring success.
Before we get into a couple of the issues around delegations, I have, if you look on there, 9-1, and that's a motion that I'm putting forward, and I'll read that out then. And this is further, or back, because of some of the discussions we've had in the past, so I wanted to put this forward. So I'll go to the, therefore be it resolved that council send a letter to the Peace River Regional District Electoral Area Directors for Areas D and E, requesting that, for them to consider funding a portion of the capital costs for the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts, and be it further resolved that council request the Electoral Area Directors for D and E that they consider committing ongoing funding to cover operational expenses at the Calvin Crook Center for the Arts. Seconded. Seconded by Counselor Parslow. And were there any questions from anyone? Counselor Malkinson?
Your worship, it's, I, I do think it's important to ask, and I do think that we do see, while you've got here 30% of patrons are from rural areas outside of Dawson Creek, but the capital cost is a bit of a tough one, because people from Electoral Areas D and E didn't really vote on the Calvin Crook Center, you know? It's a bit of a tough one for me, but I do think it's important to ask. I just wanted to let that known.
Yeah, and for the, the way it works at the regional district is, the requests would go forward to the directors, and it would be up to them on how they fund it. If they wanted to borrow money to fund it, they would go to possibly a referendum. If they wanted to take it out of their portion of fair share, that's an option. I mean, it's completely in their hands. I just thought we'd give them that, the request anyway.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think it hurts to ask.
Yeah. Any further questions then? Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you for that. And then we'll go to, we had delegation this morning, sorry, I believe it was 6-3. Make sure I got my number correct. 6-3, yes, was the request from Victoria Manson that we need to put forward here. Discussion, Counselor Schuman?
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion that we provide the in-kind pass, the in-kind funding or passes to the swimming pool for this group to have a shower and enjoy our hot tub when they're in our beautiful city.
Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Any questions? Counselor Parslow?
I'm just wondering if there's any policy that governs this sort of request.
Jim, is there policy, or we deny this?
Through your worship, this is neither a grant request nor a sponsorship request, and so it's outside of your current policy. Normally, that leaves it up to council's discretion what they're going to do in any instance.
In the past, if I can, have we, we've had requests like this in the past to use our facilities? I do not remember us any, at any time, accepting one, or...
Through your worship, I can't recall, you have consistently failed to approve people who were seeking passes for prizes for events or that sort of thing. The only passes you have, make an annual commitment to are for the Rotary Auction. That's the only one that you have given away by policy every year. I don't recall having a request for basically use of shower facilities before.
Counselor Parslow?
So further to my question, I'm suggest, I would suggest that we need to have a policy developed in this type of request.
Thank you. I know in the past, when we've had requests similar to this, we've, some of them have been around sponsorship, so we could use that, or some of them have gone through the grants policy, and this, as Jim said, didn't go through either of those avenues. They're not asking for a sponsorship, because there's nothing here that says, through that criteria, if you do this, we'll...
Through your worship, the showers could hold up a plastic sign that said, "The shower sponsored by the City of Dawson Creek," but I'm hoping there wouldn't be many eyes on them to see that. And the group isn't a registered charity or any of the things they would need to be to qualify for a grant?
Okay. Counselor Schuman?
So I see this sort of like when a group comes to us and they want to use our parking lots to camp in, basically. I mean, we've got the facility, you know, it's not going to be any skin off our noses to allow these, these people to come on in and have a shower. I'm sure the, the attendance at the pool that day isn't going to be such that they, you know, wouldn't, wouldn't fit in there or anything like that. I know there's not a policy, but really, I don't see any difference than giving them the parking lot to camp in, or something like that. To me, it all seems, you know...
Yeah. The only reason why I see it different is we've had other community groups or schools come forward asking if we would give them free access to the swimming pool as well to give swimming lessons for their kids, or we've had other community groups come forward, and we've typically denied them. So that's, my only concern is, we've got a group from out of town, I 100% appreciate that they need showering facilities, but of good conscience, we deny other ones, so. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I'll have to speak against this, because I don't like making decisions in a void of a policy, and I think there's countless supplementary requests that could be made that, once we do this, then we, we better be open to others, and I'm not against being open to others, but so I will have to speak against it until we have fully discussed all the parameters of this sort of thing.
Okay. And do we have any other questions or comments from council? Okay, so seeing that, we'll call the question then. So all those in favor of allowing it? And opposed? Counselor Parslow, myself? But it is carried.
Thank you so much.
And on that, Jim, we'll go to the diary. I'll kick that over to Greg, your worship.
Thank you, your worship. Both projects, the reclaimed water plant and Calvin Crook Center, are going well. With the Calvin Crook Center, now that we've encapsulated the lead and got the fireproofing in, the steel stud framers have moved back in. I drove by the other day, saw their truck out there. I'm sure people have seen that. They're working on the interior partitions.
open to others, but so I will have to speak against it until we have fully discussed all the parameters of this sort of thing.
Okay. And do we have any other questions or comments from council? Okay, so seeing that, we'll call the question then. So all those in favor of allowing it? And opposed? Counselor Parslow myself, but it is carried.
Thank you so much.
And on that, Jim, we'll go to the diary.
I'll kick that over to Greg, your worship.
Thank you, your worship. Both projects, the reclaimed water plant and Calvin Crook Center are going well. With the Calvin Crook Center, now that we've encapsulated the lead and got the fireproofing in, the steel stud framers have moved back in. I drove by the other day, saw their truck out there. I'm sure people have seen that. They're working on the interior partitions. Insulation is ongoing as well. Mechanical and electrical work is continuing, and the HVAC system is being constructed as we speak. Control room for the theater has been finished, and the tender for theater lighting and sound will be released tomorrow. The tender for signage in the building closed on Friday. All of the major subtrades are ramping up, and the next thing that people driving by should be able to see will be the windows being replaced. That is scheduled to start later on this week.
Just before you leave there, Greg, I think, given concerns that were expressed at the last meeting, we should give a kudo to the prime contractor, Preview Builders. They have considerably stepped up their local supervision. They have replaced the individual who had been supervising the project, and things are moving at a much quicker rate than they were the last time we reported to you.
That's absolutely true. I know I get a request to know how far along we are. All I can say with any kind of accuracy is more than we were two weeks ago. So probably in the 40s somewhere.
Forty-two point five seven percent.
In that neighborhood.
Counselor McFadden had a question?
No, I'm
He was just going, yay.
Just good, good on him, yep.
With the reclaimed water plant, the big news is that we have our permit from the Ministry of Environment in our hot little hands. The DFO permit, on the other hand, is still going from desk to desk someplace. Masonry is complete. Interior partitions are done. Mechanical equipment is being loaded in. Mechanical and electrical is scheduled to continue all the rest of this month. Roof trusses will start this week. Insulation and drywalling will begin once we get the roof on, and they've started work on the manholes in the truck fill station, because actually with this extended fall that we've had, there's not a whole lot of frost in the ground, and it's going well.
Extended fall.
Excellent. Any questions then on the diary? Counselor Wilbur?
Just something, and if I'm not asking at the right time, then correct me. I've just had quite a few people email and call. I guess it was put to the community in the past that user groups that are going to be in the art center are going to help fundraise for the cost of it. So what I've been asked is, who are these groups, and how much have they raised to date to go towards the building of this structure?
Well, to the best of my knowledge, most of that was coordinated through K-PAC. I know they've presented us with a one or two checks already from fundraising efforts. After the Ben Hapner concert, I think they gave us a check for 50,000 or 60,000, but they're also in the process of individually fundraising for, I believe, the daycare was left to them. But Jim, do you have any more information?
Through your worship, I don't know that they've broken down who their donors are when they give us anything. We have a list of the donors to the project that we have solicited.
Yes.
You just got that list because you sent them out a update letter?
Yeah.
But I don't know that K-PAC's been giving us a list of donors.
Yeah, through your worship, I don't think so. They're holding an amount of money on their side that when the project is finished, I think they'll give to us, but the only amount of funding that they've given us, I think, is from the Ben Hapner concert. So I can contact them and find out who that is and get it back to you.
Sure. Counselor Kenny, I know where you're going, so I'd love your
Yeah, they, they also, there is, was a fund in the Northeast Regional Community Foundation under the Calvin Crook Trust Fund, that there has, there's been considerable donations to that fund, and it's a, it's a, it's an open fund, so it's not restricted that only the interest can be used on that fund. So it is an open fund, and a flow-through fund, they call it. I don't know the exact amount off the top of my, my head, and I, and I don't believe we, we could list the, the amount of donors, but it's just that there is money in the Northeast Regional Community Foundation.
Can you remind me on that, too? Because I know people who I, that wanted to make contributions to the center, and I steer them to donate through that fund.
Yes.
Did we set parameters around that? Is there going to be a drop dead date where we take the money out of that fund and donate it to the project, or? I can't remember what we did.
It's up to the trustees, actually. The trustees of that fund right now is actually Faith Crook, and I can't, I think Ellen Correa, anyway, are the trustees of that fund. So it would, the amount eventually, when it, when it comes down to that, then the request would be made for funds to be really, for funds from that fund, and then it would be signed off by the trustees, and then it'd be dispensed.
Okay. Are you, is that okay, or?
Yeah, I think, I know, that helps me a lot, and I think what the concern is, knowing that these groups are continuing in, in keeping the promise that they're going to help fundraise. So maybe not a list of who's all donated, because you can donate anonymously and, and given that. So just, you know, so the public knows that, yes, they are continuing, and those that are going to be home to them are participating in building that project.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Schuman?
So I know that the Kiwanis, the Kiwanis Club has donated about $35,000, I believe, for the playground, and I know that K-PAC has a reserve account that they have been saving up for the, what do they call it? The furniture and equipment for the daycare. So I know that that's been their focus, is making sure that the daycare, which is a very good revenue stream for the center, that that gets outfitted properly. So I know they've got a reserve fund for that, and that's what they, when they have fundraising events, and when we were raffle tickets.
And they had the car this summer.
Yeah, so when we're raising money like that through K-PAC, it goes into the reserve fund for, to outfit the daycare and, yeah. So, and I believe it's a substantial, substantial little pot of gold.
I'll just mention that the daycare had a very successful bottle drive this last month, so way to go, kids.
Jim, you want to add something there?
Yeah, what we will do is make inquiries, and we will distribute to all of council all of the information we have at the moment. I don't believe anybody else saw that list of donors that you were sending the letter to, so we'll get that out. We'll get whatever Terry can give us
Sure.
For K-PAC, and whatever the trustees will share with us on the other front.
That's a good idea, because I know the people that were on council previously know of all the nice donations from all the big companies, but it'd be good for the new council just as a refresher to all of us of who was involved, so. Counselor Parslow?
Just a question around the arts center. When will we be briefed as to what parts of the facility will not be complete?
Through your worship, we are actually still finalizing exactly how much money we have left, and when we do that, we'll be able to do the value engineering to see what can or should be taken out, and that actually shouldn't take too much longer. I would, if I had to give you a time, I would say certainly by the end of the month, we should know that.
Thank you. Counselor McFadden, you have
Well, just a follow-up to Counselor Parslow and to Greg's answer. Who will make the decision, then, what would be cut or what would not be up to the original request or specifications?
Well, I would assume a lot of that would be the design committee. Jim?
Through your worship, council had delegated that work to the design committee, which, as you know, is yourself, Director Hebert, myself, and Terry. Hannah?
Thank you.
Any other questions on the diary? The only one I was going to throw in when you talk about the water reclamation reminds me that I fly out, leave town this afternoon for Ottawa this week to do a bunch of presentations. I've been contacted by a few individuals while I'm there to meet for coffee and discuss the water reclamation facility, because that seems to have stretched right across Canada some of the people's interest in it. And I know we've had delegations and people come to Dawson Creek, so people are going to take the opportunity of me being in Ottawa to explain it as well, so looking forward to that. So on that consent calendar, I don't believe we have anything, so strategic priorities, Jim?
Through your worship, you will note that added to the strategic priorities chart are the RCMP strategic priorities, which you discussed with the staff sergeant at your last closed meeting, and they're now forward for, they're now forward for review, and I think it would be great if you passed a resolution to accept them formally on the chart.
Excellent. So Counselor McFadden, motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And Counselor Schuman is seconding to modify that. Not it, thank you. So all those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried. And thanks to the RCMP for that, because as we've seen with the new staff sergeant coming in, once again, a good relationship started right away in keeping us informed. So on that, we will move then to question-answer period. Brenda, anybody from the public?
Anyone who signed up.
And no committee of the whole, so we'll go to the media. Anything during the meeting then for questions? At this time, we're out of the meeting. No questions? So, so on that then, we need the motions under 16-1 to recess to the closed meeting, but with the addition of the Dawson Creek Fire Department master plan, which will be added under 7-2 in the closed meeting. So with that addition of motion then, so Counselor Schuman, seconded by Counselor Wilbur. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's carried, and we will take five minutes.